Do have a quorum. So, folks, it is 6:00 PM on Monday, October. It is 6:00 PM on Monday, October 28th, 2024. I'll call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. First item of business, council, any adjustments or manager, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I have one adjustment. I request that the council remove item 4-A. This is the approval of the warrants. We had today's payroll day for the finance department, and they're doing audit field work, so they just couldn't get these processed in time. We'll just ratify it the next council meeting.
Done. Anything else, council? Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is visitors and communications. Is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Oh, yes, ma'am. How are you?
I am here again.
Would you mind stating your name for the record?
Sandra Perry, and for the record, it's P-A. R-R-Y, not P-E.
Noted.
Okay, so I'm here because the last time I was here was about the four-way stop sign at Prospect Street intersection. And a six-weeks timeframe was set at that time to receive a report, which now I am being told can't be done, or we don't even know the timeframe. We are without a timeframe because it has been sent out to an engineer.
Traffic engineer.
Traffic engineer. So, that's not what it appeared to be that we agreed to on the 24th of September.
Well, I'll stop you there. We didn't actually agree to anything, so I'll cop to this one.
Well, nobody objected either.
Please don't interrupt me when I'm speaking, okay?
You didn't interrupt me, sorry.
I wouldn't do it to you. So, what I asked you, or what I said during the meeting, is I looked at the manager and I said, "Do you think six weeks would be sufficient?" Perhaps I was being too optimistic, and perhaps I put him on the spot. So, I apologize, Nicholas, if I did that. And he said, "I think that will work." It's not working. You know, we're not ignoring it. We're not putting you off. The study has been ordered, and no one, you know, thinks it's unimportant, but we also want to produce good information because it's, you know, it's a serious decision.
At that meeting, we were not... It was presented that Brian would do the report, and that it wouldn't be sent anywhere else. That's the way it was presented. No one disagreed with that, so we set that six-week timeframe. And now, we have no timeframe. So, I'm here just to find out where we stand.
Fair enough.
You know, what's going to happen. And if this report comes back and says, "Sure, put up a stop sign, we're going to do it." If this comes back and says, "No, you can't put up a stop sign," what are we going to do then? Are we going to ignore the fact that it's the only exception in the city? Are we going to ignore the fact that other stop signs have been put up as exceptions in the city, which I know has happened, and there's plenty of them? So, I'm just wanting to know where we stand on the whole situation because it's not the way it ended at that meeting.
No, it ended with me being very optimistic and perhaps putting Brian and Nicholas on the spot. So, we'll back up a bit. Brian, best estimate in terms of when, or Nicholas, in terms of when we could see this report?
And, Mayor, I think, no apology necessary. I think we were all just, you know, trying to understand what we were working with, with limited information about how long it would take. You know, Brian did do a report that he shared with you, Sandra, which said that he did not recommend it. We, this report was sort of in addition to what he's already presented, right?
I haven't seen any report.
Well, Brian's initial...
It wasn't a report.
His findings.
My email, my findings are there.
Right.
And I did share those with you.
But there is in the beginning, there is...
Yes. So, Sandra, so Brian's findings were that it wasn't justified based on MUTCD standards. After your meeting, after your visit to the council, we agreed to look into it further. Any sort of further review is beyond our desktop capabilities here. So, Brian has talked to a traffic engineering firm that can do that, and we are, as with many other projects, dependent on the timeframes of external firms, right? So, I do, you know, it, that's where it is. And I've shared all this with you in email in the last two days, so I know it's not a surprise. But that's, that's the reality, that, you know, if we want to go by Brian's initial report, his, or findings, maybe I shouldn't call it a report, but Brian's initial findings were that it's not supported. This is to see if there's anything additional that might support it.
We were trying to look at whether or not exceptions had already been made in the city or not, and all that sort of thing, too, which I wouldn't think would be part of a normal engineer report without them knowing. And I just have a lot of other questions about how we work with that MUTCD. And, and that is changing as of January 1st as well, the volume of traffic, for instance, and stuff like that. So...
Yeah. So, if we...
I still have questions.
Think it's V, is it V-H?
VHB.
VHB? Yeah. Okay, so VHB, have they been ga, engaged?
They have been engaged.
Okay, so they've been engaged.
They came back to me and said that they needed to do traffic counts.
Okay.
And I'll be scheduling someone to come down to Berry and do the counts, and he can assess it. But that's, that's what we were waiting on, was to get that field information, where the initial thought was that they could do stuff with just the desktop information that the city of transportation collects. And they, they thought to produce a report, they needed to have actual traffic information.
Yeah, and I think the other piece Brian and I are waiting for, and, you know, for full transparency, is we don't know if that's going to incur a cost, right? So, if it's a nominal cost, Brian and I will make a judgment call. If it's, if we think it's something beyond a nominal cost, it's likely we'll come back to the council, right? Because we're, we want to make sure that that's something we want to spend money on, right? So, right now, it's been sort of desktop review. If, if it comes back with anything that's more of a significant cost, it's very likely that Brian and I will come and seek approval to make sure that this is where the council wants to spend money. So, that, I just want you to be aware of that as well.
So, if you'd like, I'm sure it would be possible to put, once they assign an engineer, we could put Mrs. Perry in touch with the engineer so that you, if you've got information you want to present, you can do that. You know, I don't, I don't know what more you expect. I'm sorry?
I mean, you know, it's been kicked down the road since the beginning of summer, so I'm just looking for a timeframe that we can count on or decide what we're going to do at that point. And again, if the report comes back and says it doesn't warrant a stop sign, then I'm going to question why all these other stop signs are up in the city.
That's okay.
That can be researched to find out why they're there, if they, if there was a report done on those.
There was not. I can tell you, I was here. There was not.
So, I would question why this has to be the exception.
Yeah. You know, I'm not going to make the mistake of estimating again. We're asking them to. Made that mistake once, so I'm not going to do it twice. I mean, you know, we're doing the best we can. I don't know what more we can do.
For those of us who didn't know better, in that meeting, it appeared that it was presented that we had a public works engineer who was going to produce the report. Didn't seem like anything was going to go outside of the city.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm just saying, that's the way it was presented. That's the way it came across. And a timeframe was set, which is now no timeframe.
Right. And we may have used the word findings and report interchangeably, and perhaps we shouldn't have done that. But if we followed Brian's initial findings, I don't think you'd be happy. So, so Brian is recognizing that perhaps there's more here than meets the eye, and he's recommended appropriately that we go to an outside consulting firm who are traffic experts. I'm not. And likely, Sandra, I will follow their recommendation. And if they say, "Put up a stop sign," that is likely what I would, what I would support. I'd do that in consideration with the manager's and the public work direction, director's opinion, but that's likely what I would do. I try, tend to follow the data. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a, sort of a quick follow-up question.
Sure.
My memory is that at that meeting, we had talked about if a stop sign is not warranted at that place, there are certainly other traffic calming options that can come to bear. Will the engineering...
And that's what I'd ask VHB to include on it, would be any traffic calming for that intersection that they recommend.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, that will be included in it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that addressed the question of if, if a stop sign is not the recommendation, stop signs are not always the best solution for traffic calming or slowing, then there would be other options further down that list that we could, we can investigate. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Perry, you look, you're anxious, you're concerned, you're passionate about this. I can tell. I can tell. So, what I'm going to ask Brian to do is reach out again to VHB and ask them if they could please provide us with an, with a delivery estimate, so that we can...
And I will share that with...
Share that with the manager, and the manager can share that with the council and with Mrs. Perry.
Schedule, we'll share it, and...
And I mean, I have other questions as well. It's like, who determines, as far as the number of crashes, whether or not they would be corrected, correctable or not? Who determines that? Because they would have to look at each and every accident, I would think, in order to determine if another stop sign would have prevented it. I don't understand how that can work. And I am not, I am not a scholar of that particular document, but I have read some of it, and a lot, it may, words like "maybe put," "stop sign maybe put," doesn't say you can't, doesn't say you have to. So, it's like, it's kind of wishy-washy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was just disappointed that I heard there was no information to share when the six weeks timeframe will be up, of course, election day, which I figured wasn't going to happen anyway. So, that's why I wanted to know what's next, what's going to happen. And to me, it sounds like whatever this report might be, will take months.
I don't know that.
I don't believe it will. I think it'll be...
Don't say it. Don't do it. You're doing it. You're just, you're going to do it again. No, no, you're not. We're going to get a, we're going to get a good estimate, and we're, then we're going to move forward. And, and Mrs. Perry, we're really doing the best we can. No one's ignoring you. And, you know, and no one's, no one's unconcerned. It's just, I'm sorry that things take time. I'm not a patient man either, although I've learned to be.
I walked out of the last meeting, and I felt very confident that I was listened to, and that I was seen and heard, and not only me, but all of those other people who signed the petitions. But then, the outcome of it since then...
Changed.
Feels completely different, in a couple of different comments made, and, and the fact that there's no information to share. So, I think I had to bring it to the attention of everybody. I know some of you got copied on emails that you've seen this week, but not everybody. So, now it's out there. And I, I think it's, I still don't understand if other exceptions have been made, why this couldn't be an exception as well, and what kind of harm would it do to put up a stop sign? It has to be like the cheapest, easiest fix, I would think, but...
Well, ma'am, those exceptions were made on the recommendation of the public works director and the manager. Now, if you want me to follow the recommendation this evening, I'll accept a motion not to put a stop sign up, and we can move on. But, I mean, that's where we are. So, when you say...
Are you sure of that?
Excuse me?
Are you sure that those were put up to their, to their...
At the time, if you look in the minutes of the meeting, it was recommended by the public works director, and it was also recommended by the manager. That isn't the case. I don't have, the council doesn't have that recommendation in this particular case. And what the public works director has said is his findings indicate that a stop sign is not warranted. However, he concedes that perhaps he's wrong. So, he said, "Well, let's engage an outside engineering firm to take a look at the data and see if maybe there's something that I've missed."
I would like to know the reasons why those other stop signs were, the recommendation was to put them up.
Speed calming.
The reason why.
Speed calming.
Speed what?
Speed calming.
Calming, oh.
Yeah. Again, you know, acting on the recommendation at that time of the city manager and the public works director. And those recommendations are absent in this instance. So, I'm certainly not, on rare occasion, do I go against the recommendations. I mean, the council certainly can do that. I generally don't.
Counselor Wazazak has his hand up.
Oh, didn't see you join us, counselor. Counselor Wazazak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sandra, for coming in again. I'm, I'm sharing some similar frustrations, where I felt pretty confident leaving the last meeting that we were going to have an answer in six weeks, and not to beat a dead horse here. But there is, as I mentioned at that meeting, there's another constituent I'm working with who has been requesting more time for the downtown crosswalk crossings. And it's, it's a senior citizen who does not have enough time to cross the street now, never mind when the, we had snow this morning, it just didn't stick. But it's going to start sticking soon, and it's going to get slippery there. So, not having a timeframe at the end of October for when we might have an answer to that question either is concerning to me as well.
I think TJ has...
What's that? I think TJ, TJ's working on that piece, I think.
Right, I believe you started with the, to get it adjusted by a couple of seconds, but that's all we can, we can really adjust those crosswalks because they all time...
Right.
Together, you know? So, if you add a couple of seconds on this one, you have to make sure the lights and everything work on the next. Because I believe this is, these are the ones right out here.
Right out here, yeah.
Around City Hall Park.
Correct, yes.
So, you have the multiple crosswalks and the multiple lights that all have to work together to get traffic and people across. So, any adjustment is, is only going to be a matter of seconds.
Right.
And not, and, so I, that's, I wanted to let everyone know, that's probably all that we're going to be able to get, is a matter of seconds and not an extended time.
Yeah, I believe last time I talked to TJ about this, he's talking to the, the light company that makes these adjustments, and they, they were looking at, it might be two or three max, and three might be on the max side, just because then it starts to cascade to the, to the other traffic signals, without then doing a broader study with, you know, what's happening at Hill Street and what's happening at Maple and all, and Summer. And so, that's where they thought they had some elasticity, so to speak.
Counselor Stockwell?
I just wanted to clarify. So, the mayor approves all those stoplights in the city? Is that...
Yes, all by myself. No, the city council voted to, at two separate instances, I don't believe you were on the council at the time. The recommendation was a stop sign on Air Street and a stop sign on Hill Street. The recommendation was made by the, at that time, two separate instances at two different times. The recommendation was made by the public works director to install a stop sign. The manager, not you, it was Mr. McKenzie, I believe, at the time, concurred. The council voted. The stop sign was installed. That's how the process works.
So, then, the mayor, as a role, cannot, you cannot by yourself say that we're not going to do or not do a stop sign. It's a council decision, correct?
You're familiar with the charter, right?
I am familiar with the charter.
Okay, then you know the answer to that rhetorical question.
Yes, but you were actually saying that you may decide that you might not pass the stop sign based on the recommendations. And, but I just wanted to clarify.
I would, I would not vote for it absent the recommendation of the city manager and the public works director. He got that right.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I just want to make clear that we wouldn't respond in a punitive fashion because someone came here and said they think they should have one one, that we wouldn't just not vote on it.
I don't respond to anything in punitive fashion.
Good to know.
I make judgment calls based upon the recommendation of those in charge.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Can you just mention two, two different areas with stop signs? What about all the other ones? Do you, do you have any information regarding those?
Oh, I, I don't know. Those two, I'm not sure what this discussion will accomplish. I can recall two. I can recall one on Air Street, and I can recall one on Hill Street.
Well, then maybe we could look into the one on Warren Street and Merchant Street, and the one on Liberty Street and Hill Street, and the one on Brook Street and Seminary Street. And then, there's three-way stops.
Do you have the dates, ma'am?
No, I don't, because I don't work for the city or anything. But those stop signs are there. There's four-way stops on each one of those places.
Right. On Seminary and Brook?
Seminary and Brook.
Leave that's been there since I was three.
I'm not sure how old you are, but...
Mrs. Perry, I, I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish this evening.
Warren Street, Merchant Street is, hasn't been there that long. The, the one on Warren Street and Merchant Street hasn't been there that long.
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't recall that one.
And Liberty Street and Hill Street. I just discovered that one the other day by chance, that there's a four-way stop there. I can't imagine they have the amount of traffic.
And Liberty and Hill?
Yes.
Yeah, that was one of the ones I was referring to.
No.
And the other that I recall is on Air Street. Yeah, excuse me, Circle Street. I said Air two or three times. It's actually Circle Street.
It's a three-way stop, yeah.
Yeah. So, Brian will get that delivery date for you. We'll make sure that it's communicated to you. He'll also get you a point of contact at VHB. So, if there's information that you'd like to share, you can certainly do that. Thank you. Is there anyone else under visitors and communications? Okay, seeing and hearing none, council will move on to the consent agenda. We'll be approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 22nd, 2024. I don't believe you have any licenses or permits to issue this week.
No.
So, there are no licenses and permits to issue. There are no contracts for the manager to execute. We will be asking you to rename the homelessness task force to the unhoused community committee, and reduce the membership from seven members to five members. And we'll be authorizing the manager to execute a purchase option for the Seminary Street and Campbell Place parking lots for new housing. That purchase option was in your packet. Is there a motion?
Some are.
Take your pick.
Some are over here.
Take a pick. We'll, we'll let you take your pick. It has been moved and seconded by one of you, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
I was too late.
Counsel, the motion has been made. It has been seconded. All those in favor of the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Thank you very much. Motion is carried. The, as the manager mentioned, the city warrants were not ready for this week, so we'll move right into the clerk and treasurer's report.
Okay, it's, it's brief. I just want to thank Tess Taylor for coming into the office and helping out with readdressing some of the ballots that had been mailed inappropriately to some addresses. I'd like to thank Peter Anthony for coming in and alphabetizing some of the ballots. Those are long and tedious kind of tasks, but they're necessary. We have currently documented 1,972 return ballots for the general election and 1,069 for the headwater election. Currently, we're receiving 25 to 30 ballots daily to be entered into the system, and we'll do that as they come in. And lastly, I am grateful that we have a new person in our office, Cara Ray. She's been very sweet. She's, it's her first day. I pleased, I asked her, "Please come back tomorrow." She seems very enthusiastic and willing to help, so it is going to be great to have another body in the office.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Okay, then we'll move right along. Mr. Manager, do you have a report? I'm sorry, there's nothing under liquor and cannabis, correct?
No.
And we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep it quick, because I think we're a couple minutes past our public hearing.
We're okay. No one's, no one's come on, no one's dropped off.
So, just reminders, BOR, BOR ice season is coming up, so make, check our schedule for stick-in-pucks, open skates. The ice started going down, and we'll be ready for this Saturday or the first, November 2nd are the first scheduled events. Water flushing continues through the 8th of November, so if you're experiencing discolored water, that's probably the cause. The water is normal, safe to drink, usually clears up after you run the tap for a little bit. And then, finally, we are, we had the reminder about the winter weather coming this morning, which also is a good reminder about the new emergency winter parking rules that we talked about a couple of meetings ago. Those will begin on November 15th. We put the plan up on the website today, which is good timing, because it snowed. We'll be out on social media tomorrow and doing more engagement on this. So, my message to residents is find a way to get informed and stay informed, especially if you don't have off-street parking. We are, you know, encouraging people sign up for VT Alert, stay updated through our website, our Facebook. Actually, I had a, we had a meeting today with counselors, Guston and Wazazak, about the draft flood resiliency plan to give our staff feedback, and they had a chance to try the regroup. It's, it's tough. We're trying to work through it. So, we're, we're going to roll it out when it's ready for folks to have sort of a seamless opportunity to, to sign up. So, that's why that's sort of holding off. We're, we're trying to make it roll out at a time when, when the most people can be the most successful with it. It's, it's still a little tough, even if you're savvy with your phone. So, but there's other, three other ways to stay informed of the winter parking ban. Of course, we're going to have the digital signs doing that as well. So, my message to residents, especially those without off-street parking, like I said, is find a way you like to stay informed and, to get informed and stay informed that way throughout the winter. So, that's it for me.
Questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to new business. 8A is a public information hearing. It was warned for 6:15. It is now 6:27. I haven't observed anyone either leave, drop in, drop out. So, Mr. Manager, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And we have Wayne Elliott from Aldrich Elliott here to join us, and Brian Baker is here as well. Wayne has been sort of our, our point on the engineering side. He's helped put together the, he put, not helped, he put together the information you have in your packet. He put together the flyers that we've put on our website, and he, he can really talk us, walk us through the details of this project. Brian's here also to, you know, on the, on the supporting side, the operational side, can weigh in on those details. And I was going to turn it over right to Wayne, and he has a PowerPoint that we probably just want to jump right into. Is that right, Wayne?
Yeah, sounds great. Yeah, good evening. Everybody's excited to talk about wastewater treatment tonight.
Let's see, get this...
Want to talk about continuing to have the flow flush?
Give me one second to get this PowerPoint up. Sorry, Wayne, just one second while it loads here.
Wayne, do you mostly do water sewer? Do you get to, like, branch out sometimes?
Branch out into what? No, I primarily, water resources. I've heard 36 years, yep. I have too many places in Vermont I haven't touched over the years. So, we have drinking water of all sizes. We've got all around Vermont, yep, storm water.
All right, it's all yours.
Okay, I'll just give you this next slide. So, I usually just like to start here with kind of rejoining the article with everybody. So, Article 1 here is, "Shall general obligation bonds or notes of the city of Berry in an amount not to exceed $7,600,000 be issued to pay the costs of replacing the headworks at the city's wastewater treatment facility, a project having an estimated total cost of $9,297,000?" Okay? So, going to get into a little bit about the background, try to throw a lot of photos in here. You can see the photo on the top. That is your existing 1970s vintage door Oliver, the trider grit removal system. You can see it's pretty tired. It's outside. A lot of these structures were put in back in 1970, so they've been around, and you've got more than a useful life out of them. There were some slight improvements done in early 90s, 1990s, but generally, a lot of the equipment and stuff is at least, you know, 30-plus years old. A lot of this, we really expect has a useful life of 20 to 25 years, so you well exceeded that. What's important here, you know, as you've learned, you have an assurance of discontinuance, which was issued by the state last December. There's a lot of conditions, requirements, and deadlines in there. Very important to maintain suitable, reliable operation of the treatment plant, to make sure you're complying with the requirements in that assurance of discontinuance. There's a lot of things in there. And what could happen, you know, with this structure in particular, it's not directly tied to, you know, your permit limits, but it is indirectly. I'll talk about that a little bit more here in a couple of slides. But it can cause, or be the cause of permit violations. And if this didn't pass, for example, you know, the state could turn back, and you could be subject to some type of fines, or definitely required to go to a second bond vote. So, this is an important project here, the first of, a first of at least one or two, to address some much-needed age liability issues at the treatment plant. So, there's been a treatment plant at the site since the late 1950s. Been a few upgrades, major ones in 1970, '94. We're here really to talk about what we call the liquid stream, but you have the headworks, which is really primarily here tonight. You have primary, final clarifiers, ditches, disinfection. Then you have all the solids handling. So, you've got a belt presses for sludge de-watering, you know, for digestion. You know, it's what we call a conventional activated sludge plant. You treat water from all kinds of different sources, residential, commercial, industrial. You also receive wastewater from the town of Berry. Your waters, wastewater strength has been very high, you know, higher than typical that it was originally designed for. And you're permitted for an annual average daily flow of 4 million gallons per day. And of course, with the wet weather we've had over the last 18 months, that's been a challenge. Flows are significantly higher throughout for all municipal treatment plants because of the weather we had a year ago in July, the rain we had in December, and then back in this last July. So, just a quick... So just a quick overview of your major upgrades. Of course, some of the stuff dates back to the late 50s, so it's, you know, 60-plus years old. In the case of the headworks, you know, that was done, the structures back around 1970, so that's up around 55 years old. And then some other projects, the last major one is really in the mid 90s with some minor upgrades to the headworks. And then you've had two or three other projects, 2000, 2009, 2010, but nothing really significant to kind of what we call the liquid stream component since the mid 90s. So why is a headworks necessary? So it does a couple of functions. You know, you have an older sewer collection system, so you receive a lot of grit. It's really important to get that out of your system because if it doesn't get removed properly, it continues for the rest of your treatment process, and it causes wear, premature wear on equipment. Can also, also plugging. The other thing that we've seen since we got through COVID is the use of wipes and a lot more inorganic material. And you really just have a grinder there right now, so it comes in there, and I'll show you a picture of this structure a little bit. So it's just really grinding, turning that material. It's not removing out of the flow stream. And one of the things we've learned over the last five to 10 years, it's really important to get that out of the flow stream because if you don't, it continues downstream and it plugs pumps. It creates unnecessary wear. And that's where it indirectly can affect your, you know, compliance because it can, you could have issues with certain pieces of equipment may not be operable, all kinds of maintenance issues. The guys at the plant are constantly pulling rags of various things out of pumps and equipment down there. So it's really a critical, we call it preliminary treatment, by getting this, the inorganic screenings and the grit out of your flow going to the plant is really critically important. So that's why you're really kind of facing the need for this upgrade as a first step here. So the project description, so the picture at the right, you know, you can see that's as you come into the treatment plant site. That's about where the new headworks is going. It would include demolition of the existing structures. You can see part of the grit, kind of in the back of the photo there, to the right of the primary clarifiers. I'll show you a floor plan, but we're looking at about a 2,000 square foot building constructed. It would just be for the headworks, the preliminary treatment. That would have the process, mechanical system, so heat and ventilation and all the electrical components. The primary major two pieces of equipment we would have in there is what we call a multi-rake screen. That's going to have a washer-compactor behind it, and then we'll have a new grit removal system with grit concentrator. And I've got some photos, and I'll talk about those a little bit more here quickly. So this is what you have now. The flow comes in. It goes through a grinder. You can see the main channel is to the right. It's about a 30-inch pipe coming in. To the left is a bypass channel. All it does is grinds it up, doesn't take it out of the flow stream. So without that, it causes plugging, premature wear of equipment downstream. That's one.
It'll catch up here in a sec. Maybe.
We could talk about the next slide. So you can see, this is your grit removal system that goes back to the early 1970s. Again, it's called the trider, and you'll see in some other photos, so that's removing the material in the flow stream. And then what we're doing, it's pumping it out. You can see the pipe. Very rare to have all of this outside. You can imagine in winter in a climate of Vermont, having pumps and piping and all that stuff outside is not very reliable operationally. And then you can see the unit to the right. That's what we call kind of a grit concentrator. And what we're trying to do is remove as much of the water out of that because the material that comes out has to be properly disposed, landfill. So we're trying to reduce the volume of that. But as you can imagine, in the winter months, that isn't very functional or very practical for the operators. And then the gray structure with the block kind of slope, that's the stairs that go down into the ground. There's a grit removal pump there, so that pulls it out of the structure, pumps it up through the white pipe to the concentrator. You can see it's tired, it's aged, it's, you know, really, the technology's old and dated and way past its useful life. So this gives you an idea of the proposed site plan.
Question?
I just, I'm looking at this, and I've actually been to the wastewater treatment plant, so I'm sorry to interrupt the flow, but it's also occurring to me, looking at that, that also feels like a safety hazard.
Yes.
You have to go down, and it's actually confined space.
That's right.
So we have to document and permit that every time the guys go down there to have to service those pumps.
Yeah. But there's also, it's a good point, even looking at the A and R, some of that isn't OSHA compliant, you know, there's not kick plates, it's not full. So yeah, there's definitely some things, safety issues.
I just keep saying the word grinder, and I'm looking at that open space and... Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
So this is as you come to the site from the right, the river's on the upper side of the page, the north side. You can see the, kind of the dashed slanted lines. That's where the new headworks is going. So we have to pick up the 30-inch inflight pipe that comes in from the right. We call the interceptor sewer. We have to transmit that flow through the new structure, comes out, tie that back in downstream to the existing piping so it can continue to the primary clarifiers and then pumped up to the rest of the treatment process. We've made some adjustments here, so one of the challenges, we have to keep the existing structures inoperable during construction. We don't want to take that function away. It's not great to begin with now, but we want to leave that operable during the construction. And then the other thing we've done is there's some work with the other parts of the treatment plant, but you can kind of see there's two dashed circles there where there could be two new primary clarifiers. Constructing the future, we want to preserve that and leave that space available for those opportunities where we move the headworks slightly to the north to better accommodate that. Give you an idea of what the floor plan would look like. Again, they're coming at it. On the right side, the flow's going to come in, the upper part of this, similar 30-inch channel. It's going to go through the screen, go through the grit removal system. This building actually has three levels. We have to make sure the electrical components. So if you're looking to the left, the mechanical and electrical room, those spaces are all above the 500-year flood elevation. We're a lot more concerned and conscious of that over what we've had over the last year and a half at a lot of these facilities. And then to the right, you can just see a couple of sections, the screen to the right, there's the grit removal system is the deeper part of the structure. And then the one to the lower right-hand corner, you can see the multiple levels. And we're really doing that just so the structure's a little bit more efficient and easier to get to the operators. So we don't have these very deep channels, so that's why we have these multiple levels. And then back to the plan view, the lower right-hand corner, that's a garage door. So the material that's removed by the screen, which you'll see in some of the photos, and also the grit removal, we get the water out of that. It goes through a dumpster, kind of a trash truck or something come in, pull that dumpster and take it away for proper disposal. So this is kind of what a screen looks like. It's what we call a multi-rake. This is a photo of a similar size brand in Winuski, Vermont. It's got vertical bars, quarter inch, so the material, the flow goes through that. Keith pulled that material up, goes into the back, and then this pipe that you can see is actually what we call the solids washer. So again, we're trying to remove as much water out of that to minimize the disposal costs. And it's really the inorganic, it's the plastics, those kind of things we're really trying to get out of here. So we're looking at vertical quarter inch spacing to get the liquid through. This is a photo of a similar screen on Keene, New Hampshire that was just put in a couple of years ago. This actually goes down to a lower level, but it brings this material up. The pipe behind is what we talk, you know, the solids compactor washer. And there's a dumpster to the left and a separate garage area that's emptied for disposal. Couple of things on the grit. This is what we call the grit concentrator. So there's a pump on the top. We pull the grit out. It goes into the EC unit. We're trying to move again as much as the water. Little hard to take a photo, but if you can see at the very bottom, that's the grit removal system and the floor kind of down vertically. So in your case, it's pretty deep. You know, we're down 20 to 22 feet with that structure because we need to maintain the gravity flow that's coming in into the plant as it is now.
Lagging again. There it is.
Yeah, just another photo. This is again a grit concentrator similar to what you'd have. Again, we're just trying to, the grit system is over to the left in this case, again, pulling the water. That's going into a dumpster off to the right for disposal purposes. All right, you know way more about a headwork structure than you ever thought. All right, proposed schedules. So we have been in the pre-design, doing a lot of the preliminary work, kind of ready to jump into the final design permitting phase. If the bond vote passes, you know, that's final on November 5th. Looking at a 90% designs middle in the spring, May, bid phase of July, starting construction. Probably what they would do is start the sheeting, de-watering, the concrete foundation, work on that until the weather was not cooperating, and then come back in the spring because a lot of this equipment, you know, the lead times are 12 months plus with the controls and stuff. So it's not that they're going to be working there for 18 months, but the lead timeline, the equipment. And then the other thing with all these projects is it's all got to comply with BAV and the Built America by Americans. So those are some of the crosscutters and some of the new funding requirements we all have to comply with. So this is a summary of the cost from the original preliminary engineering report that Wright Pierce did. They came up with a total project cost of 9.3 million. You can see the breakout there. We're recommending a bond vote amount of about 7.6 million. I'll talk a little bit about the funding, so you don't have to vote the total project cost. And what we've done is made some conservative allowances, what we think you're going to get for grant funds, which is really the difference between the total project cost and the bond amount. When we're into the total project cost, it includes the construction, extend it out to the start construction date, which would be next summer, carry a 10 to 12% contingency. They carried a little bit different number here. That includes everything from engineering and includes other related costs are all in that budget. Anything from administration, legal, short-term interest, permit fees and all that. So that's all in that total project cost estimate. Talk a little bit about the funding sources. You know, one of the things we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can here. We're really looking at primarily this project to be funded by the state and federal. So I'll start with the state. Through the Water Investment Division, you qualify for up to $250,000 in engineering subsidy. So all the engineering that's being done is 50%. And then you also qualify for a 10% pollution control grant. So we're estimating that at about, so if the column to the right is actually a key motive total, and then the one in there is actually the estimated amount of that funding source. So we're estimating about $905,000 for the state pollution control grant. Working with Brian, there's actually a meeting on Friday, so the city will be submitting an application to USDA Rural Development. One of the challenges, their funding program is they can't, even though you can submit an application, they won't issue a funding offer until you get a positive bond vote. So that's why the timing on this is good. So we don't have an official funding offer from them. The city does qualify for up to a 75% grant. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that you're going to get a 75% grant because we typically see that average grant for these type of projects, even if you qualify for that. And obviously, that's going to vary a little bit from year to year, what they have available for funding. But we've estimated a 30% grant that should, and hopefully, you can get better, but we'd rather be a little bit on the conservative side. So we're estimating $2,445,000 for the grant. And then the rest of that would be USDA loan. The city does qualify for the poverty interest rate right now, which is 2.375%, and that would be a third-year loan. So overall, a really solid funding package, and we hope it's better than that. But we're estimating at least 38% of that total cost would be in grant and subsidy. So projected impact to your sewer budget. One thing that we always stress with all these projects is to make sure everybody understands, everybody in the city votes. However, only the sewer customers pay for the debt on these projects because it's a separate enterprise fund. The estimated annual loan payment, this would be for the USDA loan at that lower interest rate, is about $268,000 per year. And one thing that's important about that is because of town of Berry, the agreement with the city would pay 27.2% of that annual loan payment. Projected impact to sewer rates, first loan payment would be due in about 2026. Partway because you have to spend the loan money first with USDA before you can get into the grants. That would close the loan. Couple estimates on, you know, how it would affect the sewer rates. A low-flow customer, you know, $3.72 per quarter increase, you know, that's about a dollar a month. Average flow, residential customer, about 53,000 gallons per year, you know, an increase of about $13 per quarter. About a dollar, I'm sorry, $4.31 per month. And one of the reasons that, you know, I know people don't pay their sewer bills on a monthly basis. However, all of our other utilities are paid on a monthly basis, whether we've got Comcast or Vermont Gas or Greenmount Power. So it's important, you know, a lot of the public utilities, you pay on a quarterly or semi-annual basis. But it's important, I think, to back that out, just to put that in perspective about what we project the estimated monthly increases for this, for this particular project.
So an average user is 1,000 gallons a week is average?
Roughly, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yep. I would have thought it would be much less. That's divided by seven, give or take 150 gallons a day.
Yeah, so, you know.
An average user.
If you go to the state, a residential unit is defined as 210 gallons per day. So somebody comes to you for a sewer allocation. But if you, once you connect that property, you know, we typically see their average daily usage about 150 to 165 gallons per day. There's a couple of reasons for that is, you know, our households are smaller than they used to be too, or get a lot more. We don't have the four-bedroom homes anymore, so those have come down. And the other thing which I think is great too is on the drinking water side, a lot of the water usage is trending flat or even decreasing, and some of these communities are growing. All the new construction, as people do renovations, you know, everything's just a lot more efficient. So appliances, showers, you know, faucets and things like that. So that's good on the water side, but it also has a great benefit on the wastewater side as far as reducing the flow contribution. The other thing is I think people are just a lot more aware over the last eight to 10 years about how much water they're using. You know, when you brush your teeth, you turn the faucet off, shorter showers. I think we've all got our kids trained a little bit. So that's all a good thing, but we're, those are kind of the trends that we're seeing, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And we talked a lot about wipes at an earlier meeting.
Yep.
Talk to me about grit. What exactly is it? Am I going to be afraid I ask?
No. So there's varying degrees of that. The problem in a lot of the Vermont municipal communities, you have old sewer systems. So you know, you've got the old clay tile pipe with the open joints. You're getting some dirt and silt, and that's really what we're talking about here. It's not anything that's coming out of the wastewater.
I think if you remember, we watched the video of the North Main Street sewer line. And saw how that's all crumbled and flat. That's throughout, that old clay pipe does that, and every time you have a gap in there, sand and gravel can wash in.
Yeah, it's not necessarily something that somebody's flushing from their toilet. It's just around the material around the pipe that's kind of making its way in. And then we still have many communities, bigger ones, that have what we call a combined system. So they have, still have stormwater systems, so that's carrying that material off the streets and the stormwater and the sewer system. Not necessarily the case here, but that's really what the sources are.
So it's really sand, dirt infiltrating the system?
That's right, yeah. And that's because the gritty nature isn't good.
Come back from the beach, take a shower. Where do you think the sand goes? Gotcha. And purely out of curiosity, because I watched them live tap a six-inch water main once, which was fascinating that they could even do that. The changeover, like, how does that? Because obviously, you've got to keep the old system functioning.
Yep.
And then at a certain point, you know, how do you change that system over? Is it a gate valve? Is it?
Well, in this case, we haven't, honestly, we haven't quite gotten into those details yet, but back to the site plan.
Is it going to be you, Brian?
It will not.
Just wondered.
Yeah, we've actually tweaked the layout a little bit. What we're actually talking about doing, so if you're way up to the right, you can see the black circle. That would actually go on that existing line. And what we actually do is call it a doghouse pan hole, so they would set that over that existing pipe. We would let the flow stay as it is now, and then we would probably do a core kind of way up to the left where you come back into that existing structure, so those would really just be plugged, accessible. And then once all the new equipment, all the electrical, everything's kind of good and running, then you're just going to go. and running, then you're just going to go in there and start. What we'd probably do is probably divert the flow to both for a little while, make sure the new equipment's operating properly and it looks good. And then at that point, we would just block off, we would abandon out of the existing pipes, probably fill them with flammable fill, just they don't settle and break and create issues down the road. And the existing concrete structures, all the equipment's removed, the electrical. We would typically cut those down, maybe a foot or so below grade, fill them in, and so it's safe and secure and all that. But yeah, you know, we deal with this all the time at these plants. The sequencing is always a challenge, and you have to maintain operation, whatever it is, the treatment process, it's just kind of part of the constructability.
So new sewer treatment plant, ballpark estimate, replace everything, all of it?
Everything?
Yeah, just throw a number out.
Well, we got a bond vote in Shelburne on next Tuesday, and it's 45 million. But that's not even a new plant. That's a consolidation. So it all depends on the size and what you have. I mean,
50, 60 million?
Probably could be 100 million plus, yeah.
So by investing, I mean, essentially, 9 million, 7.6 of which is bonded.
Yep.
Now, we're protecting, I mean, what has been about a $20 million investment in that facility, having a replacement cost in excess of $45 million.
Your existing plant?
Yeah.
If you want to start that new, it'd be well over 100.
Million.
Yeah.
So.
Typically, the wastewater plants are probably the largest and most costly piece of infrastructure in most communities.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple, since part of what we're doing here tonight is both to learn about the project and think about ways that we can convince voters in Berry City to make sure that they vote yes for it. My first question is, where are we on the sort of bell curve of Vermont wastewater treatment plants? Are we way overdue on this? Or are we way behind the curve?
I would say you're way overdue. And I'll kind of speak to that. Of course, I wasn't involved, but the assurance of discontinuance, that's a pretty major, significant issue. I mean, I've done this for 30 some odd years, and I have not worked on very many of those over the years. So that's a sign, and there's a lot of, you know, very specific deadlines and criteria and all that stuff, which is really an indication of you guys are behind, I guess is the best way to put it. So, yeah.
And a sort of follow-up question on that. If this were to fail,
Yep.
I would assume we're looking at a much higher cost to deal with the fallout from that failure, and then we have a replacement cost.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not sure what the next steps here. You know, I haven't had any discussions with the state here. I'm assuming if this didn't pass, they're going to require you to go back to a second bond vote on this project or this headwork structure. The other thing to keep in mind, this is one piece or one first step, and probably another days or two of work here, too. This is the initial thing to kind of protect what you have now. There's going to be other projects that are going to be upcoming. So if it doesn't pass, I would assume the state's going to probably get back into, they could reopen the assurance of discontinuance, probably at least require that you have a second bond vote on this project. If that didn't pass, then I don't know, that's up to them. They could be, you know, subject to fines or kind of reopening the assurance of discontinuance. So, yeah.
One of the items that's in the assurance is the repair of our digester. And right now, what has caused the damage of the digesters are those rags. So if we don't get this, they're still going to force us to repair those digesters. And if we repair them now,
Ash again.
We're just throwing money away. So that is one of the reasons is, we're going to kind of incorporate that into this project. And basically, as soon as the headworks are fixed, we're going to fix those digesters and then become compliant with our assurance.
So is there like a five to 10-year plan? There's the headworks, there's the digesters, there's the other things that need replacing?
We are currently, Wright Pierce is putting together a complete preliminary engineering report of the plan, which should have the other phases of this, maybe not mapped out, but planned, to see what we do. Then we can do a timeframe and map that type of stuff out.
Two more things. So this should help reduce odors for people who are living near odors.
Again, most of those odors are coming from the digesters. So this is the first step. Repair this project, repair those digesters, get the gas collection system working properly. That flare will be burning off any additional methane. The smell should be under control at that point.
That'd be great. So I think it's just good for people to understand, it's not one thing. The plant is really old, there are a number of things that contribute to the smell. And the life of the headworks, of the new headworks, what's that? Is that going to be like 20, 25 years also?
So the structure is building on a lap would be, you know, 75 years. And you've got that out of what you have now, that plus, the equipment controls and all that stuff is going to be at least 25 to 30 years.
Thank you.
Yes. I was just going to, something that Brian mentioned triggered something for me, too, which I know that there'll be, you know, cost to retire the debt service, but there's also potentially efficiencies and savings that come from having a headworks that work and having digesters that work. So for example, one of the things that happens now is we have to pay for fuel to pay, to heat up, is it the digesters? Because we can't capture that methane, which could be used to heat the digester. So there's a, there's sort of a domino effect, right? So that's.
And another aspect of, if we have the digesters working correctly, that basically reduces our sludge by probably close to 40%.
The stuff that's shipped to Canada that we talked about last week.
Right now, we're pressing the water out, and then we have to dispose of that landfill. If we could utilize the digesters, and then our budget for the sludge is about $450,000 a year for sludge disposal. If we could reduce that, there's a big savings. We'll be paying that $260,000 yearly payment fairly quickly with everything. So it's, you see, it's the first step, plan placed to try to, you know, if everything goes, in, you know, in a couple of years here, we'll be running better and more efficiently.
Sounds great. And I bet the people who work there are also excited.
They are. It is a constant maintenance. Yeah, we've got five employees down there, and they are constantly doing the maintenance on this, these systems here.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, we have a, the state has issued the discontinuance notice. They're right, they're correct. We have a wastewater treatment plant that has serious deficiencies. The first of which we have to address is the headworks. Unfortunately, it's a $10 million project approximately. But, you know, you said it yourself here a moment ago, if this bond vote fails, we will be back, you know, much like the school budget. But we won't be back with a lower amount. We'll be back with the same amount. If we don't pass it quickly enough, in all likelihood, the state will start to issue fines. And those fines could run $5,000 to $10,000 a day, and run into millions of dollars annually for the city. So it's not, you know, it's not like you're sitting here or the manager is sitting here presenting a $10 million project, 7.6 million of which has to be bonded for the fun of it. It is a necessity. So I hope people understand that. You heard us talk about other needs in the city, mitigation plans, buyouts, things we'd rather be doing for our citizens. Well, think about how you feel if your poo wasn't being processed and your toilet wouldn't flush. I don't think too many people in the city would be happy. So, you know, we joke about poo, we laugh about poo, but this project is a necessity. This bond has to pass. We need to move forward. It's as simple as that.
That's a great point. If you come, if you had to come back to a second vote, it's not like we can reduce the size of this by 40% and cut it to every minute of it. It's basically got to be the same, because we've got to have all those functions. The building is going to be the same size, or you're not going to be able to cut anything to come back with a lesser project that's going to be as effective and it's going to be functional as what's needed here.
And this not only addresses, you know, we talk about adding more housing in the city, the need to add more housing in the city. With this headworks project, we actually increase our capacity to process household waste. So it's pretty necessary, not just for today, not just to address the deficiencies, but also looking forward to the future. Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Any questions for anyone in the audience or online? Yes?
Osa Bush, Berry. I see everything from like an energy standpoint, because I just do a lot of energy work. And perhaps this is not a supportive thing, but I imagine this unit also increases the energy take from the grid, perhaps, with adding solar to the site support in a way, and then could grab a grant for the solar and therefore also for like a more efficient facility, processing facility. A lot of people like the energy, so I just thought I'd throw that there.
I'm not an engineer. Go for it.
Well, I'm not sure exactly how all that, but we do have solar, invested in solar. I think if I remember right, we're kind of maxed out on our existing buildings that we've submitted, because I believe the, it's all the water treatment plant, I believe the, usually it's a zero bill because of the solar that we've invested in. But I think there's a limit on that that we can invest in. And I believe we are at it, I'm not sure.
But there may be better opportunities later for solar. This is, the headworks is a tough one, because the interior, you got, you have exposed wastewater, so it's what we call a class one division. It's a classified space. So you have to have minimum ventilation requirements, so it's safe for access. It comes back to this confined space. We have gas detection. You need to get the air changes, so it's safe to enter there. The building material has to be all non-combustible, so it's a little bit challenging. This structure isn't a good example of something. There are other components in the treatment plant that would be much better suited to energy efficiency measures or other types of options like that. This one, functionally, is just difficult to do that practically.
Good question, though. Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Anyone online? All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. We'll look forward to getting this project started and a successful vote.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we're at 8B on the agenda. This is volunteer appointments. First up is the, well, unhoused, actually, you can cross off homelessness task force from your agenda, because we did that earlier in the meeting. It is now the unhoused community committee. And first up is Ann Merrill. Welcome.
I'm Ann Merrill.
How are you?
So I moved to Berry about eight and a half years ago. And when I moved here, I didn't expect to be in the housing world. But I ended up at Capstone for eight and a half, for five and a half years, and then transferred over to Washington County Mental Health for two, two and a half of those years now. I have a passion to help those that are homeless, those who are going through evictions. I've worked with many of the community members and coming up with money to help support the homeless people and people going through evictions. So I have a lot of passion for this. Michael knows who I am, does the work I've done, and how much I care about our community. So I'm hoping to be a part of the task force at some point for this vote.
Fantastic. Questions, counsel? Yes?
Thank you for coming, and thank you for applying. So can you tell us a little bit about your experience working with folks?
So I worked in Capstone, I was the only housing coordinator until COVID broke out. So I worked, I did all of Washington County by myself, working with the landlords and working with the court systems when evictions were going through. I've helped save quite a few evictions in this area by coming up with some funding to stop the eviction process.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And I usually just ask one question, well, a few questions, actually. Have you, have you attended any of the meetings? Have you met with?
I have not, because they were like,
Yeah, they haven't, they've been dormant, in fairness. Okay. And have you spoken with anyone so that you understand, you know, the time requirements, the constraints?
Yeah. I've spoken with Tammy Fagason, who is on the board right now.
So you understand the time, the time demands, and you're prepared to meet those?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you. Counsel, I would accept the motion for appointment.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those who favor the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amelia Marie, how are you?
I'm good, really well, thank you. Hello.
Tell us a little about yourself.
Certainly. So I use Amelia Marie, or Amelia Klein is my old name. I now use Osa Bush, just so that is known. I am also applying to this position. And I have worked with the homeless population for around 15 years, but with Good Sam for around four years. I experienced homelessness for around five years. Currently, I am a street outreach worker with Good Samaritan Haven, and I also do health and safety work with them, specifically doing a lot of wound care with our folks in Washington County. I run a 24-hour phone line or text line for our unhoused community and any community members that need questions answered, or what it happens to be. I have a great amount of passion for this work. Folks can reach out to me at 3:00 in the morning, and I'll go out and give camping gear, or dress a wound, or assist with getting someone into the hospital. I'm also a community health worker.
Great. Counsel, any, yes?
Not really a question, just I've seen your work in other contexts, and other meetings and things like that. And I know it's, that you're deeply committed and doing a wonderful job. So thank you.
So I've known Osa for years, can certainly vouch for your character, your passion. Don't hold that against Osa. And I would, now, you also, you've met with some folks, and you understand the time constraints, how much time it's going to take, and you're prepared to meet that. So counsel, I would appreciate a motion to appoint.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
One point of discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
We need to define either 2027 or it was 2026 for the terms.
Yeah, so this is, thanks, Counsel, Deering. This is the re-launched committee, and so it was vacant. Last meeting, counsel appointed Kathy Partlow. It could be either or, I mean, we, we have three seats that expire in '26, two that expire in '27. So it's really up to the council, it's up to the individuals, if there's any preferences one way or the other.
We've done, how many of the '26s and so?
So I slotted Kathy in as a '26. I just started taking the '26s first, but that was just a sort of a.
Well, it's almost Halloween. Let's give them a treat and go for the '27s.
That was my thought process with the discussion.
Cool. It would be, for both seats, it would be understood by the.
So Ann and?
Ann as well, that both of these seats would be a '27 seat, and then we'll have one '26 seat left.
Two, two '26s. We have Kathy, Partlow will be in a '26, and I know there's, there's another two coming, I believe, the week after that.
And those will be '26 appointments.
Correct.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Thanks, Counsel, Deering.
All those who favor the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome aboard. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to the Development Review Board. Elizabeth Ruud Turner. I think Elizabeth is, ah, Liz, would you rather be called Liz?
So that's usually what I go by, yep.
Oh, good. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So I'm new to Berry. I just bought a house here in August, moved in about a month ago. And I'm a lawyer, but I don't, I mostly work on policy issues related to land use and land access in the food and agriculture context. So I wouldn't, I'm not representing anyone that might come before the Development Review Board. But I do have a lot of knowledge and expertise in that area. I'm, again, new to Berry, which I, you can tell, because I didn't know how to get into City Hall tonight to get access to the council chambers. I'm not sure if there's a secret door that is unlocked after 5:00 PM, but I didn't know about it. Anyway, I'm just looking to get involved in the city, and this is a place where I thought I could be of some use. So I sent an email over and was encouraged to apply. So here I am. sent an email over and was encouraged to apply, so here I am.
Fantastic, questions? Yes, Counsel, Deering?
Just one question, what made you decide to move to Berry as a transplant?
I'm from Berry.
What brought you home?
I grew up in, in Brattleboro, um, and I work at Vermont Law School, so I was looking for a place where I could afford to buy a house within commuting distance of there, um, and actually, I was living in Bethel for the past year and started spending a lot of time here and really got to like it, and, uh, sort of focused my search on Berry City as we were looking for a house.
Welcome to Berry.
Thanks.
Any other questions, counsel? So Liz, you heard my softball question, I just want to make sure that, you know, when folks apply to participate in, on any committee, and the DRB is, uh, I don't want to say one of our, I think they're all demanding at times, but the DRB, DRB especially can be demanding, and what's really important is attendance, um, because of the time you have to wait, so if someone comes in, they want to start a construction project in our short construction season, it's so important that we have that quorum, so that they, that applicant doesn't have to wait a month or six weeks, so I just want to ensure that, that, you know, you've thoroughly considered the, the time requirements of the, of the committee, perhaps watched a few of the meetings, and you're ready to participate.
Yep, I have, I'm, I'm ready to jump in.
Fantastic, counsel, motion would be in order.
Moved.
Okay.
It's moved in seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome aboard, Liz, and welcome to Berry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, I think we'll skip upcoming business, we just did that a week ago, uh, roundtable, Counsel Stockwell.
I don't know whether it's Berry Town or Berry City repairing the, the Bridge Street end of the bike path, but they're doing lovely work, it's nice to have that repaired. Is it Berry City?
Argus, yeah.
Good work.
Thank you.
Counsel, Deering?
Uh, get out and vote next, uh, next Tuesday, make sure that if you have not received your ballot, check in with the clerk's office, I know, uh, my mom is one of those that needs to check in, her ballot was, uh, returned undeliverable, she lives at Tilden House, kind of strange, um, but hey, get out and vote.
Counsel, Guston?
I will echo the get out and vote, and please get out and vote, especially in favor of our bond, the headworks facility, um, as we just got an excellent presentation on that tonight.
Same, same thing, please vote, please vote for the bond, we need it, and you can't live without it, period.
Absolutely. Um, likewise, I hope people, you know, as I said, understand that this bond is a necessity, this infrastructure is a necessity, and speaking of voting, the next time the council meets, we, America will have chosen a new president, and we will have chosen a new governor, and lieutenant governor, and many, many, many others. Um, if you're like me, you donate to everybody, that's why I get text messages from Kamala, and I get text messages from Donald, and it's kind of amusing. Um, you look at politics, you look at the divisiveness, and I hope, however the election turns out, people can get over it, because there's nothing more frustrating than people who can't get over an election. You know, America's gonna choose, and Vermont's gonna choose, we're gonna choose our leaders, and over the years, I've been around a while, my favorite phrase is owned by George Bush, don't cringe, yes, he was a Republican, but it was the promise of America, and I just love that, that phrase, the promise of America, and it occurred to me during my service that the promise of America isn't kept in Washington, you know, it's kept right here, in cities and towns like Berry, and in Winuski and Burlington, you know, this is where we make it happen, and while our leaders are important, they don't define what we do every day as citizens, and what we do every day as citizens defines the type of city, town, country, state that we're going to be. So what I hope for America, what I hope for Vermont, because guess what, whoever sits in the White House, not gonna do a whole lot for my life, it's up to me, I make the decisions, and I make my life better or worse, so I hope regardless of the outcome, that people can get over it, get behind our leaders, be a good neighbor, be a good citizen. So with that, we'll have a lot to talk about at the next council meeting, I'm looking forward to it, and with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn and get out of here at seven eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to not have an executive say.